I would like to call the works, I would like to call this work session of the Prince William County School Board to order. This work session of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22nd, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continued operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Tonight's work session is for the school board members to participate in the final markup for the fiscal year 2022 budget. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Walts.
Thank you Chairman Latif and Members of the Board. Good evening. Tonight is the second and final work session on my proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. Before we get started, I would like to pause and recognize the loss of another PWCS employee to COVID-19. I'm very saddened to share the news that Mr. Richard Zuckernick, Garfield math teacher, has passed away due to complications from COVID-19, which he has been battling for the past couple of months. To all who knew him or had Mr. Zuckernick as a teacher, this is a terrible loss. Mr. Zuckernick began working for Prince William in August of 2011, when he began teaching math at Lake Ridge Middle School. He transferred to Garfield in August of 2017. Mr. Zuckernick loved teaching and was extremely dedicated to his students and to Garfield High School. Mr. Zuckernick is remembered by his colleagues for having a huge heart. He cared deeply for the success of his students and made learning math approachable even, for even the most reluctant of students. Although Mr. Zuckernick had been teaching virtually all year until his illness, he built strong bonds with his students due to his caring personality and commitment to Garfield. Please join me in a brief moment of silence in his memory. I will now turn to tonight's business. As I presented to you in February, this budget builds upon the success of PWCS and focuses on the future with six key priorities, supporting our students, teachers, employees, and families. Thank you to the school board for your questions and your feedback from our past work session and throughout the process. Also, we have received further updates on revenues that have increased since our last update. Mr. Wallingford will now detail these changes. Mr. Wallingford.
Thank you, Dr. Walts, Dr. Latif, Members of the Board, and Dr. Walts. Next slide, please, Jason. So, the conference report, the House and Senate of the General Assembly got together and produced a conference report a couple of days ago, and we got that information yesterday approximately four, four o'clock, 3:30, four o'clock. And I'm not going to go into great detail here, but I'm going to give you the highlights of what happened. I can see some of you looking at the bottom line. What you can see is we have an increase in revenue to the school division of approximately $15.5 million. First line, you can see sales tax increased by about $6.9 million, the reforecasting that's taking place. There was, if you recall, a 2% one-time bonus built into the biennial budget. That was removed. And in the next line down, you see compensation supplement making a 5% raise, a permanent, a permanent item. In other words, that is money that we can spend not on one-time things, something you hear me say frequently. The next item you see is no-loss funding. There's a modest downward change in that no-loss funding of about $3.5 million, going from about $20 to about $17 million. And the final line you see there is $700,000.7, if you will, million dollars, and that is a variety of other things. Modest changes in, in other revenues, the items that you see listed, they're really the only big changes. So, just one or two other things I'd like to mention. First of all, you may have heard the General Assembly, excuse me, the Congress, the House and Senate have reconciled the budget. That was passed earlier today. And so, that $1.9 trillion dollar relief package will be providing us with a pretty substantial sum. We're going to be looking into that and seeing what the mechanics will be. It's going to take us a couple of months to get at that funding, but that's good news for the school division. The last thing I want to mention, actually, two things I want to mention. There have been conversations over the county about changing tax rates. I'm sure all of you have heard about that, and I just wanted to raise it as an issue so that it's something you're aware of. I think you've heard this number, $29 million, if they actually go to a flat tax bill. Finally, in that .7 or $700,000, variety of adjustments, there is one thing that I'd like to share with you that is a change that we typically don't make this time of year. We've been waiting until we got most of our revenue numbers. We don't have them all quite yet. But a decision that was made over the past couple of days was to actually reduce our enrollment forecasts by 1,000 students. Okay? And there's, there's a long conversation that one could have about that, but simply stated, there was some concern that those numbers might be a bit high, and so, we've pulled that down by 1,000, by 1,000 students. And what will happen is when we get to the adopted, once we get the budget adopted and we hand the allocations back out to budget holders, principals, and central office department directors, we will include that reduction of 1,000 students in their allocations. And that's what I have. Dr. Walts, back to you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, based on these new revenue increases and your feedback, I am making a number of further additions to my proposed budget. Highlighted on this slide are my proposed additions that include the following. An additional 2/10% cost of living adjustment for all employees. This increases the raise to a total of 5%. Adding an administrative coordinator of workforce development with the Career and Technical Education Office. Providing all temporary teacher assistance with a $1 per hour increase. Adding 22 technical support specialists to move closer to one T-spec for every school. Further increasing our mental health support for students by adding an additional 5.5 social workers, 7.1 psychologists, and a behavioral specialist. Also, I am including an elementary virtual teacher to pilot an all-virtual class for the year at the elementary level. I am proposing additional support for the office to support homeless students, including a counselor and a secretary. Next slide, please. Again, based on feedback from the board, changing the Equity Coordinator Grade 14 to Chief Equity Officer Grade 18, as was originally proposed in last year's budget. Adding a secretary to Grade 6, 250-day contract to support the Chief Equity Officer. And as I mentioned last session, that that person would report to the deputy or if the new superintendent so chose, they could obviously come back to you and say they want them to report directly to the superintendent. Adding an associate superintendent for middle schools with a differential for support staff to support a couple of administrative positions. So, the person helping that I mentioned last week, helping at the high schools, who is a principal on special assignment, there would be no additional support. They would simply be supported out of the high school office with current staffing. And the same for middle school, even though there would be a second associate, we would, for one year, have an additional, those additional folks being supported by the current support staffing with a differential for the two support personnel currently providing that service. Adding a .5 Secretary 1, Grade 5, 200-day contract in support of the school board office, along with some additional funding to help support the school board's translation services, which have dramatically increased. I will now turn it back over to Mr. Wallingford, who will provide a few further updates for you. Actually, I think, let me, can we see the next slide? Yes, if Mr. Wallingford, we've had, you know, various discussions over the months and weeks about support for mental health, and we certainly recognize how important that is, and each and every board member has certainly made it clear how much they want to make sure we continue to support our students. So, there's not additional, there's not additional counseling support in here, and I wanted to make sure that the board understood where we are with counseling, because we've actually made much bigger corrections and improvements in that over the last couple of years and with what's in the original budget this year and what we did over the previous two. So, Mr. Wallingford, if you would please go through this slide on school counselor ratios.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. What you see here are three years of historical data on our student-teacher ratios for school counselors. In the three groups of two, and what you see in the first column is fiscal 20, adopted budget. That is, those are the ratios that we actually use to fund. And then in the second column, you see the fiscal 2020 SOQ, the standard of quality, the requirements of the state, and you can see that for '20, '21, and '22. And I'd like to point out really just one or two things here. If you take a look at fiscal 20, and I think many of you have heard this, what happened in fiscal 20 was the governor's budget actually set the student-teacher ratio, excuse me, the guidance counselor, or school counselor ratio lower when the budget was introduced. When it got to the House and Senate, those numbers went back up, and that you can see in the second column, to 455, 370, and 325 to 1, respectively. What we did here that year was we actually left those ratios in place that the governor introduced in, in his budget. So, we were ahead of the game there, and we, and we left it. We could have, we could have changed those numbers to meet the state guidelines, but the superintendent felt that it would be a better thing to do to leave those counselors in place. You can see in each of the subsequent years that at least in one place, we are outpacing the state's numbers. For example, in fiscal 21, you can see that the middle school ratio is 278 to 1, when the SOQ was 325. And then, again, in fiscal 22, you can see the SOQ at 325 for high school and 325 for middle school, and 325 at the elementary level, and you can see that both at the middle and high school levels, our numbers are lower. So, we're ahead of the state. This is something we've been, I would say moderately aggressive about, and, and we will continue to push those numbers down to the extent we have revenue to make it happen. Dr. Walts.
Next slide, please. So, with some continued adjustments, and again, when I conclude this slide, if Mr. Wallingford has anything else to say about, about the revenues, we were able to make some final changes today, and I want to go through those quickly. We're almost done. First is, there will be additional class size reduction, and actually, we can, we can include, it says high school there, but we should really say secondary, because we can make some adjustments at middle school as well. But the bottom line is, if you reduce class size at, say, the elementary level, which, where we had a multi-year class size reduction plan, we are at a point where it's rather difficult to continue doing that, since we've done it several times, without having to build additional classrooms. And, and we've had one or two board members who have consistently reminded us that if we keep doing that, that means additional building capacity. Whereas at the high school level in particular, and in some cases at the middle school level, we can target certain teaching positions where we allow creative things to be done. There could be an additional period added in for virtual. We could ask a selected teacher, would you be willing to give up a duty period for additional compensation and take on another class? We have had very limited funds to do that in the past, but where we have, it has made significant difference. Because say, for example, you have five English classes and you're, or let's say you have four English classes, the teacher takes on one additional class, you're basically taking a full load and dividing it now among five classes instead of four. So, you can see at the high school level, that's a significant improvement. We also know that the school board in our community is very concerned about economically disadvantaged students, and we have a ratio that funds them on a per pupil basis on students with free and reduced lunch. We were able to increase that last year, but not as much as the board and, and the administration would have liked, and certainly myself. So, we are adding another, about 6.3 million to economically disadvantaged, and on the bottom of the page, you can see how that breaks out by formula. In addition to the pre-case sections in the original budget, we're able to use our matching money and add six more on top of the ones, of the new ones that were presented at the last session. And then I mentioned earlier about the T-specs, we were able to get an additional 10 and a supervisor, because we're now adding, I think it's maybe 20, 32. I'm pretty sure that's correct, but something in the neighborhood that would allow every school right now, many of the elementary schools almost all share a T-spec, and there is a lot of, obviously tremendous activity in technology with us having one-on-one and all the work that is involved with that, and all the concern and time. This will allow us to have a T-spec full-time at every school. And so, that gives you the total additions. Again, I will turn it back to John for the final wrap-up and the budget date, budget vote date.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. So, just, you're correct, Dr. Walts, 32 is the total number of additional T-specs we're adding with the one supervisor. The other thing I'd like to point out, if you recall in our budget last year, we had been very successful at doing many things before the pandemic started and we had to cut. One of those things, and Dr. Walts talked about this a bit, was economically disadvantaged funding. At one point during the budget process, we'd actually increased that number to about 21, a little over $21 million. And what you will see with this adjustment is that we will actually be in excess of where we would have been last year, had we not encountered those cuts. And so, I just wanted to make that point. This additional funding has provided us with some opportunities. Jason, next slide, please. So, just to wrap things up here, you've seen this slide. I want to remind you of a couple of dates. We are currently looking at approval of our budget by this board on March 17th. You see, you see on the slide up there, today's, March 10th, we're going, going to go through markup. And then on the 6th of April, it's our intention to go over to the county board and make the presentation that we make every year to the Board of County Supervisors. And there are a couple of dates thereafter that you don't see. On April 17th, they'll be actually setting the tax rate, and hopefully, it will be the tax rate that is been advertised. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Walts. Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Certainly, a lot more good news. And, and Dr. Walts, I think, I think it was a couple of years ago when, when he came in and did his magic with the budget, Lily Jessie just said, "That's it," and she got up and left. This is great. And she went off on a trip she had to go on, and she said, "This was fantastic." In the same way, Dr. Walts, I want to thank you. You added a lot of stuff that the board had talked about over the last week, and certainly the new revenues are helpful. I think what we'll do at this point, you know, you have the ground rules in front of you, this is the same as what we do every year. I think that we can have each board member go through and have a chance to make some opening comments, and then we'll go around if there's any, you know, cuts. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Are we going to have discussion and question before we get to the markup, or are we just running right into the markup?
So, we, you know, I have two, I have two sets of ground rules here. I have a discussion and questions, and then I have a school markup ground rule. So, I thought we would just do the, you know, in your opening remarks, you can ask the questions, and then I think we then go around and just do the quick markup. At this point, you know, there's, there's a straw poll we could take, but I think at this point, most of us are pretty happy with this. I think we'll just hear from each of you very quickly about your opening comments and any, any sort of new questions you have on what was presented. Then we'll go around and ask if, if there's cuts, and the way we do that is if someone wants to make a change, then we do a poll on that to see if there's five votes to make a change of the budget, and then Dr. Walts will come back next week with the, the amended budget based on what we learned tonight. And so, I think what we'll do is we'll go around the room. We'll start with Mr. Wilk, because he has a call to take.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm going to step out at 6:30. I did promise one of my elementary schools that I would jump in on their virtual PTA meeting, so I will be back in about five to 10 minutes after that. First of all, I do want to thank the superintendent, when the, kind of the broad coalition of, you know, the citizens of my district, and then we combined with Ms. Zagapour, the Coles District, looked at some high goals, basically overarching goals, that some of those goals were, you know, making sure we got the extra percent for the COLA, providing for our subs and TAs and bus drivers, and then also focusing on economically disadvantaged students. I'm happy to say that really all those have been met with this budget. So, I'm very happy with that and that approach, and I thank Dr. Walts with that. I do have some minor alterations that I would like to propose after we get through kind of the introductory comments and rounds. I don't necessarily have any questions, because the entire team has been very good at answering board member questions and the budget group questions, so, but that's kind of where I stand on that. So, once again, I thank the superintendent and his team for meeting these very lofty, broad goals and making sure that we compensate in all those areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. We'll start on, on that side of the room. Ms. Jessie.
Good evening. I want to thank Dr. Walts and his staff for providing this budget. I also want to personally thank Mr. Al Shiroki and Mr. Beavers, who met with me and reviewed the elements of their capital improvement plan. I also wanted to just throw out a question about, I know that Dr. Walts and Mr. Wallingford said that the bonus pay that Mrs. Zagapour and I have been asking for will be a part of maybe the budget, I guess, from the president, and I want to make sure that was clarified, that that's going to happen, and that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to ask a question about is, as we get, I guess, as we get into this, in the non-traditional schools, the fixed allocation, I've been looking at that, and I'm not sure I know what theoretical capacity means, but does it mean that because of the way the school is structured, that they will have a flat or fixed rate, and that their budget can remain at 12 million, I think it's 12 million point two, and I think Mrs. Williams and I are both in concert in that? So, that's just a question. I assume that the answer is yes, but I just want to make sure that that was clarified. And I will come back and ask additional questions as we come along. I, it's, it's difficult for me, because I'm looking at all this new money, and honestly, I love to spend money, so I just, I need a little bit of time to absorb all the new money. So, thank you very much. I'm not going to get up and walk out. I just want to absorb all the money.
We don't want you to, Ms. Jessie. No, thank you.
Okay. I'll be happy to address those, Ms. Jessie. So, first of all, just so you, you probably caught it when I went through the list, but the, the supervisor or the new employee for Career and Technical Education that you talked about last time, that is in there. Also want to reiterate that, yes, I am in support of the board's idea about a bonus. I do support that concept. We want to make sure that we have that money in hand, that that money is one-time money, and we already have some staff working on some possible ways that that may be done. And so, the answer is yes to that as well. And then finally, on the traditional school, again, as you know, we have a phenomenal traditional school, or non-traditional school rather, the non-traditional school at Independent Hill, and we've had amazing success with students in that program. Mr. Icorn and his team over there have done an incredible job. And am I, I think it's Dr. Icorn in now, is that, am I correct on that? Ms. Goss?
Yes.
Is it Dr. Icorn?
Dr. Walts, Mr. Icorn, soon-to-be Dr. Icorn is here. He said June.
It's, he's not quite just yet.
Okay. The almost Dr. Icorn, so I understand he's there. So, essentially, there's a lot that occurs with the budget that has to do with students who end up being referred over there, but in short answer to the question, yes. And he was also very, very generous when we went through the enrollment fluctuations, as he has done in the past. When I say in the past, the year that we thought we were going to have to lay off many, many employees, he generously put forth money to make sure we didn't have to lay off one, and it was, it was much needed and appreciated. Likewise, he did the same thing this year, and it is my intent that his budget would be fully restored. And with that, I will ask Mr. Wallingford if he has anything to add, or if that covers it.
Dr. Walts, that pretty much covers it, but the one thing I'd say is that budget has been restored to levels that it was prior to the current fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Thank you, Dr. Walts. Thank you, Ms. Wallingford. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to express my thanks and gratitude to Dr. Walts and all the staff for adding the things that I have been hollering about for a few years. So, I have one thing left to holler, but we'll save that for another budget season. I'm very appreciative of the Associate Superintendent for Middle Schools. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Bixby will probably eventually be appreciative, one less burned-out employee, so I'm very thankful for that. I just want to publicly say, this is not a reflection of Mr. Bixby's work in the sense that he does not do a good job, he does an exceedingly good job, and we'd like to keep him around. I also appreciate the fact that with the addition of that position, we are being sensitive to our budget by deferring additional staff for that position. I think that that's a smart move in allowing the incoming person, whoever that may be, whenever they do get here, to be able to transition, because there's going to be a lot of change in our lot of change in our division. And, you know, I'm always advocating for admin because they are the gatekeepers and knowledge holders. So I think that incoming person will be able to share the resources. And I appreciate the differential that was put in there for that staff to support them as well. There are just so many things I'm thankful for in this budget, especially the equity, Chief Equity Officer. If I could dance and there was a band, I would dance over that. So I am so very excited about that, considering the state has one, our own county government now has an equity position. It is only right, I think, in my opinion, that the school division has one and someone who is able to work with all staff at all levels. I do have a few questions. So the first one is, I noticed with the new additions this evening that we are adding one elementary virtual teacher. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that? I'll do one question at a time. Dr. Waltz, you're on mute.
I would be happy to as soon as I unmute it. Yes, thank you. So there's a couple of things at play here. One, the state is really ramping up its virtual program, and we certainly have taken advantage of that in the past and will continue to do that. And it may have even more possibilities for us. It's considered one of the most innovative in the country. And we were just briefed a little bit more about that at the State Superintendent's weekly conference call. So there's that piece. But we know that in the technology plan, we're looking at the high schools, and you had expressed an interest in looking at the elementary. And so essentially, what this is, is a teacher level, meaning paid for as a teacher to work in support of our virtual program, to look at a possible pilot at one school where we could offer at least the upper grades, like third, fourth, and fifth, if we had a particular school that really wanted to pilot this. It might include some of the same, the word has slipped right out of my mind, you would think I would be seared into my memory, but synchronous teaching. And/or if there's enough students, that it would be a total virtual program, starting in an elementary school next year at grades three, four, and five. So again, this would be someone to coordinate that work and further explore all the options that might be available at the elementary level and to help make that pilot a success. And then look and see where we are next year. We don't know exactly where we'll be next year. There's a part of me that won't be sad that I won't have to deal with the implications of COVID going into the start of the school year. But the fact remains, we may still have some people virtual at the beginning of the year. That's an unknown. But again, this person funded as a teacher would be working on that pilot.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. I appreciate that foresight, because I think virtual has really worked for a lot of our students. And I think it's a separate issue from where we may or may not be in the fall. And then my next question is, I'm curious to know if, it's kind of two questions and then one for another day. But when we reduce our enrollment forecast, if you could talk a little bit about what would happen if we do have more students come in? And then when we talk about in the budget about reducing class size, where are we with our program capacity for middle and high school? Because I know that impacts class size reduction, and we were supposed to be moving towards that, but there's a ton of things that have gained more significance over time. And I'm just kind of curious to know where we are in the planning stages of that and how that would impact reducing class size. And then the one for, two for later, well, one for later on would be where our new pre-take programs are going. We don't have to answer that tonight. And also, the, and one more that we don't have to answer tonight because it's not yet quite law is Danica Delegate Rome's bill for lunch and not being able to, I guess, go after lunch debtors, and how that would impact us financially. But I don't need to know those two answers this evening because they're kind of, I think, in the planning stages, and one's not quite solidified yet. But that's something I'd like for another time. But if you could talk about the enrollment forecast and program capacity, that'd be great.
Sure. So I'll give the short answer, and then there may be more detail that you want, which I can refer to staff. So again, I've stated this before, that I sleep very well at night, knowing that the folks in finance, led by Mr. Wallingford, previously by Mr. Klein, have things in place in order to plan for almost every eventuality. And so when enrollment, if it's less than we think it's going to be, we actually, even though we have some funding that goes away, we also have some expense that goes away. And so whether it goes up or whether it goes down, there are implications. If enrollment is higher than expected, we have a fund that is meant to address those things. Is there any brief additions you would like to make, Mr. Wallingford, to that?
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Yes, we maintain several reserves. I believe one of the questions in your, I think it was in Group Two, actually refers to those reserves. The ones that would help in this case, where there might be enrollment changes from forecasts and from what is allocated to the schools, is the general reserve, and that's in this budget, it's about 5.9, if I recall correctly. And then we have the holdback reserve, or we call it the holdback allocation. That is another pot of money that we maintain that's historically been used for growth in special ed classes during the year. And that number, if you take a look in your questions, I think you'll see that number's around 1.5 or 1.6 million dollars that are free to actually backfill any kind of enrollment problems that we might encounter. Everybody's aware of what happened this year. We were substantially down because of the pandemic. And the one thing that I would say is that over the past 28 years that I've been here, it's been very, very steady growth rate over all the years. We are in a period of a year or two or three where the numbers have turned, and it's very, very difficult to forecast in the middle of a turn or right before a turn, in fact. And so we do have those reserves in place, and to the extent we have any issues with enrollment, I think we'll be a little bit more aggressive about dealing with those than we were this year. Thank you.
And on the middle and, or middle and high school program capacity, so you are correct in that, and the board graciously added a position. So where we look at the calculations of enrollment and the implication of our program capacity at those levels. And Mr. Shiroki, I don't know if you or a member of your staff wants to provide just a little bit more information on that, but yes, we have made some good progress in that area. Mr. Shiroki?
Yes, our planning team, with the addition of the one FTE that was added, we have completed the elementary program capacity previously. And as you know, that the middle school was completed, and we actually utilized it with the Potomac Shores Middle Boundary Process. They are currently working on the high school program capacity, and we anticipate that that will carry over into the next school year with obviously an expected completion date of more than likely about spring of '22. And we'll be completed with all three at that point.
Thank you. Maybe at a future board meeting, we could get like a just overview summary of that, because I think that that's something really important, is education changes. The space, the way that we utilize the space also changes, and that does impact like our budget and things like that. So it might be a good refresher for all of us when we talk about class size reductions. And then I just have one last question, because the other two are not for tonight, and that is, if you could just humor me and say that we're going to continue to fund Independence, because, you know, that's just a school that I love so much, and I know it's, you know, our budget is included, and I heard that they're going to be restored, but it just, you know, in a pandemic, we all need happy things. And that would be my happy thing. So if you could just reassure us one more time, I would greatly appreciate it.
Well, I am happy to do so. And yes, that is, budget is restored. And please, please be happy.
Thank you.
Very good, Ms. Williams. Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to also thank everybody today, specifically Dr. Waltz and his staff, and to Mr. Wallingford for answering all of our questions and then answering more on the phone the other day. I'm looking forward to the collaborative process today. I'm still looking through the numbers and the slides. I'm worried about enrollment and the impact on schools. And I still have concerns regarding support for kindergarteners and, you know, at some point, looking at TAs for kindergarten. But I am excited about some of the items listed that I'm still reviewing, specifically increased funding for the economically disadvantaged and additional social workers, specifically during this week, which I think is School Social Worker Week. And I'm excited to learn more about the translation services that was listed for the board to help access and make the board more accessible to more families. So looking forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Waltz and Mr. Wallingford and staff, this budget looks really good. I like some of the additional things that were put into the budget, the additional T-specs, social workers, psychologists, behavioral specialists, homeless support, because I think, I do like to see, I think we don't really have a great idea of what students are going to need, but we do know that they're going to need a lot of support services. And I think that this budget does put resources into the classrooms and into the hands of folks who are going to be working directly with children. So I'm pleased about that. I just wanted to say thank you on that. And the technology support positions, that's a lot of positions. I think you said there were 32. That's great. And the fact that we'll have somebody at every school, I think is fantastic as well, because I know our technology needs have increased dramatically at every school. And I think this will make a really, really big difference. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Other than that, you know, thanks for keeping the teachers in mind and all of our staff, in fact, the additional, a little bit of COLA there to get up to, I think you said the step increase would be 5%. That's fantastic. I think that's good news. I think everybody's going to be really happy about that. So, thank you.
Diane, Ms. Ralston?
I just want to thank everybody for what they're doing. That's the bigger piece. Once we get started on this new budget and we can find the funds that everybody's so good at keeping and taking out, is when I need to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. First of all, Dr. Waltz, thank you for adding these things back into the, or into the budget. I feel like there's feedback here. And there is feedback. Try it again. It's a little better, but I still hear it. Anyway, I was, I was, nope.
Try it now. Try it now.
Try it now. Hello, hello. Oh, much better. Thank you.
I just turned my microphone on. It seems to work. Go.
Oh, there you go. All right. So thank you for all of the considerations from various board members. The 5% raise is amazing and outstanding, and I know our teachers and our staff deserve it, plus more if we possibly can. Thank you for adding more T-specs, because I know that was a huge concern, especially since we've got all this technology. I do have a couple of questions later on about some of the background stuff, but I'm just so pleased to see these additions. I'm so grateful that in a time like this with a pandemic, we're able to find these supports. And I would just want to be very clear, thank you to the staff who work here so hard, answering our questions, getting us to different places of understanding. I think at some point, for our constituents, if we can talk about the balance of Kelly Center positions, sometimes there's a misunderstanding why we need some of them. So when we come to a couple of the positions that maybe we have questions about, it would be nice to hear how they support the learning inside the classrooms, because we all talk about how we want to make sure that the kids are getting all the support they need, and it's really hard to talk about how a network engineer does that. So I think at some point, if we can have that discussion, it can be very brief, but just make sure that people understand that. Anyway, thank you so much for this budget. I am pleased.
And then that just leaves me here. Mr. Wallingford, a couple of quick questions. On the enrollment number, you guys said that you'd expect, I think it was 1,000 less, plus or minus a few. And I think that's good to plan for. I think it's better to budget for less, because it's just clearly with the pandemic and with population changes, we're not sure. Is there any anticipation by your forecasters or Dr. Waltz that it could be even lower than that? Meaning come in even less?
Well, it certainly is possible. And I guess I would defer to Mr. Shiroki. I don't know if you want to have Mr. Beavers or Dr. Cartledge give a very brief response to the chairman's question? Mr. Shiroki, I'll let you determine.
Yeah, and so the question would be, you know, you came up with this number. How comfortable are you with that number, I guess, very briefly? You don't have to go into all the math.
Here's what I'd say. Mr. Beaver's going to speak to the issue, but what I'd say, just one or two quick things, and then turn it over to Dave and Al. The period that we've gone through the past year, year and a half, is the most uncertain period we've, any of us has experienced, both financially and from a forecasting standpoint. Like I said earlier, trying to predict the turn is almost impossible, and trying to figure out what's happening going through the turn is very, very difficult. We have some very talented folks who do that work. But because of the level of uncertainty, I think caution is probably the wisest way to approach this.
Yeah, I think Chairman Latif, Dr. Waltz, nice to be here this evening. I think this, the word that we've used in the shop is speculative, because there are so many variables at play now that we've really not had to consider before. I think we've seen some changes that we don't really know how exactly to assess. So I think Mr. Wallingford's cautious and conservative approach that we've discussed, I think it makes a lot of sense. It certainly could be that we lose students again. I think this past year, when we lost students, it was the first time in 40 years that we'd lost students. So it's been a long time. We see the fundamentals continuing to grow, the number of housing units in the county. The housing market is still doing surprisingly well. Interest rates are still very favorable for home purchases. So the fundamentals are still there, so we do see in the long run that student enrollment will continue increasing. What happens in the short run is the real question.
Mr. Chiroki, you have anything to add?
Yes, just to very briefly say that, we've talked about this with projections. It's a science, but it's also an art. And right now, we're having to use all of the math and all of the projections and calculations, but actually having to create an art from it. And again, we will continue to work with our finance department to find that balance, knowing that if we move toward five days of instruction this fall, if more students begin coming back, that we can pivot and adapt very quickly to that. So again, we're going to continue to work with our finance department in lockstep, as we've done this year, knowing that these variables, because as Mr. Beaver said, all the economic indicators are all positive, unlike back when we had our recession. It was the opposite. So we know that when it rebounds, it's going to rebound, and our school division will recover. It's just what's the timing of that?
Wonderful. I thank you very much. I think the conservative approach is commendable, and I think the right way to go, especially in light of incredible uncertainty. And hopefully, we sit here and say, well, we're plus 1,000, and it's a lot different. So I- we sit here and say, well, we're plus 1,000, and it's, it's a lot different. So, I, I think that's great. The second question I have, and, and Dr. Waltz, I frankly have zero issues with the budget after studying it for the last month. The only question I have, and question, not concern, is I love the economic disadvantaged funding that we're going to do. I continue to be a proponent of doing more at the high school level because we already, our set rate at the elementary level is pretty high already, and our middle and high school numbers for economic disadvantaged funding are lower than I, than I wish they were. And I see in this breakout that we're doing more at the elementary again. Now, it might just be because there's just more elementary students. I, I don't know if that's the reasoning, but I would love to see if we can do, and I don't know what the actual breakdown is per pupil at the high and middle, but my effort over the last three years in budgeting has been trying to really make the difference at the middle and the high level. And I just, if you have any quick thoughts on, on how you decided how you would do the three levels?
So, thank you, Dr. Latif. Those numbers are simply allocated out, like you said, based on the number of students in each of those categories. It's very simple prorata. You're correct, the elementary level, I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but they're in, in the range of two to three times higher than they are at the middle and high school levels. I think the logic to that, and I'm the--
Yeah, I think Dr. Waltz was trying to unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Waltz.
Yeah, that's fine. Dr. Waltz, do you want to just address that? Because I know we've talked about this year after year, but, and I know you, you've always committed to investing at the younger levels a lot because you felt that that, that made a difference. Are we at a point now where we have enough for them, and we may not ever have enough, but, you know, my concern is can we do more at the middle and high level on that number?
So, there's a couple of things that play into this, and you're absolutely right. If you're, if you think about the elementary school, starting with pre-K, you've got seven grade levels. And so, yes, you have many more students. In the middle, you have three, and in the high school, you have four. That, that's one factor. The other factor is the overall budget of an elementary school is so very, very much less. So, for example, if you're trying to do something with, say, an additional position, or you want another teaching assistant, the flexibility at the elementary level by scale in terms of the way we fund is very, very different. It's much harder for an elementary school to come up with the funding to do something, even if it's just, you know, create a steam lab with one teacher. That pretty much takes almost all the flexibility out of their budget. Now, what I can say is that with this additional money coming from the federal government, we can certainly revisit an additional infusion of funding, although that's one-time money. It can be spread out over at least, I believe it's close to two and a half years, but we'll know when, when all of the detail. But it'll be whenever it kicks in, and then the following two years. But we can certainly make a note to look at some additional infusions at the middle and high school level of that money.
Dr. Waltz, I think, actually, you know, thank you for that answer, because now it makes more sense, because the enrollment drop this year hurt our elementary level dramatically more, and they had to make some cuts, and they clearly didn't have the flexibility that I, now it makes a lot more sense. So, on the enrollment stuff, we'll have a good idea on enrollment, really, by August, at least the first day of school. We won't have to make any late, late-minute changes at the elementary level. We'll have a better idea, right, Dr. Waltz?
I would, I would say this, based upon, you know, doing this 16 years. We have quite a bit of enrollment that happens in September. We have a number of our students, especially our English learners, who may be involved in, with their families in other places and in farming. And there's just a tendency to have a very big infusion of students in September. So, what I, what I would suggest, and, you know, I certainly have a great staff in my absence that can help the new superintendent understand how this works, but just to be very, very closely monitoring those enrollment numbers in September and try to make the adjustments a little bit earlier. The other thing that really was a difficult issue for us, Dr. Latif, was we kept getting mixed messages from the state on whether we were going to be held harmless, and it was really unnerving, because quite frankly, what I, what I did, and, and I will take part of the responsibility and blame for that, is I wanted to try to hold on as long as we could, but it, it just drug, drug on. At first, it was week after week, then month after month. But I think, I feel strongly we'll be in a better position. We'll be very closely monitoring that, and we also have buffered ourselves with reserves that I think will help to mitigate some of the changes that happened to several of our elementaries.
Wonderful, Dr. Waltz. Well, at this point, I mean, and I thank you very much. I mean, it actually gives me a lot more insight into, to what happened, and certainly moving forward, what we need to think about. At this point, I think we'll go through the board, we've, we've gone through everyone, so now we'll go through the board members who may recommend a change, and, and we'll do a, he already did. He was first. Yeah. So, we'll, we'll go through the, the board members to see if they have a change. And so, I, I can tell you that I have nothing that I'm going to be recommending. I'm, I'm very comfortable with this budget. The only thing, again, I would caution, as Dr. Waltz already cautioned and Mr. Wallingford, that we're still dependent on the county's advertised tax rate. And so ultimately, you know, we may be coming back here for another markup afterwards or something new changes. But fortunately, again, this is going to be, I think, another good, certainly a great budget for this year. And in, in the context of a pandemic, I think we've done well. We'll start in the same order. We'll go to Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, just a fair warning. So, this is not like last year. I don't have 20 rounds of this. So, those all failed gloriously, other than, I think, one or two. But like Ms. Zargarpur said, you know, my goal, you know, is to put as much, allocate as much funding back into the classroom and for student and learning and achievement. And so, that's kind of where my focus is. I do believe we are stewards of the taxpayer funds. And like Dr. Latif said, they will be setting a tax rate, so I hope we maintain that. So, the first thing I would like to move forward with is to actually remove the Associate Superintendent of Middle School addition with the staff that comes with that from, okay, whatever, the 300 and something thousand was-- Yes, the one position at that point. So, I'm going to move that we actually take that out of the budget.
Okay. So, anyone who supports Mr. Wilk to take that out of the budget, raise your hand.
Mr. Wilk, could you please explain your rationale?
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Again, my belief is, you know, trying to make sure the funds go back into the classroom. I think at this time during the midst of a pandemic, adding a position at that level before even a new superintendent takes office, I think would be, I'm trying to think of the word. Long story short, I, I personally believe at this point that the money should go back into other areas and reallocated versus getting another position at that level at that rate.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Wilk, and I admire your new stance towards putting funds back in the classroom, but I just want to remind the board that you also need people to support those people in the classroom and to do that work. And this is actually a huge compromise because the position is just one person. It does not come with additional staffing requirements. So, I just would ask the board to think critically of that, because we are in a pandemic and we are, Dr. Waltz has his hand up, we are understaffed as it is. And, you know, all of our associate superintendents are doing double, if not triple, the work. So, this is, position is designed to help that need that we have with the addition of more middle schools that we bring online. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. And then, Dr. Waltz--
So, let me go to Dr. Waltz and then Ms. Jessie, and then we'll go back to Mr. Wilk. Dr. Waltz?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Yeah. Mr. Wilk, I just wanted to, to give you one piece of comfort. Again, this was requested by board members, but I do want you to, to know that this would be a position that would be filled after the new superintendent becomes involved and named with the school division. We would not be hiring someone without that person's involvement or even waiting until they literally were working here July 1st.
Ms. Jessie?
I'm not sure who the board members were, but I was not one of those people who was asked. I, I'm not definitely, I have questions, to be honest with you, because I, I think that I'm concerned that a new superintendent coming in is obligated now to hire an associate because we put it in the budget. And that's my, Ms. Will, I'm going to ask the superintendent to answer that. Thank you. That's my concern, because the new superintendent may come in and want a different structure, and so I need to have some assurances that he or she will not be required to put this position in. And the other question I have is that you've got an individual that's the high school, middle, so how does, how does that join in with that? I just have some questions about that. So, Dr. Waltz, if someone, if you could address that, I'd appreciate it, because it helps me--
Sure, I'd be--
--in making my decision.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to start with the last thing and then go work backwards. So, the person who is helping now is, is helping across middle and high school, principal on special assignment. So, that person would work exclusively to help at the high school level, and, and this new associate would be at the middle school level. Withholding the position until the new superintendent is, is named and perhaps even waiting until they're actually after July 1, but certainly I, I couldn't agree more that the superintendent, the new superintendent should be recommending the person, and also the new superintendent certainly has the right to come to the school board if he or she has a different organizational structure or might want to convert that or any other open position in a somewhat different way. When I came 16 years ago, the board had me come early, and I was invited back with Dr. Kelly and was asked if, were there some changes that I wanted to make, and I had a couple of changes, not a lot. And the board was gracious enough to work with then Dr. Kelly and, and make those happen. So, I think it's very important that everybody understands that the new superintendent will have that exact same latitude to work with the school board and to recommend what he or she thinks will help them to be most successful.
So, that, that individual will have that latitude, and because I was going to suggest that the money be placed in that position without labeling it as an associate, but what you're saying to me is that the new superintendent coming in would have the latitude to either accept this position or not accept the position and/or restructure. But your rationale for putting it in now is, could you kind of elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. The rationale is to make sure that the appropriate budgeting is in place, because, again, you know, adding positions in the middle of the year that are, are high level, I'm not saying we never do that, because we, we certainly have, when we, when it came to everyone's attention, that we really needed additional assistance in, in the legal department. And so, again, it's not that it couldn't be done, because we have done it. We've done it with other pandemic-related positions during the year. But yes, that flexibility would be there. And let me give you one example. I know we talk a lot about sometimes the way other school districts operate, but instead of just having one person like an associate, in Fairfax, they have a, a team of people, and they have executive principals that are in each area or would be the equivalent of an executive principal answering to each of those regional superintendents. So, you know, if the person decided they wanted to do that, then, you know, they would simply bring those ideas to the school board. And generally speaking, the first year is a pretty good year when you're a new superintendent, because it's sort of like a marriage. And the, you know, the, the board wants the new superintendent. The superintendent has accepted to work with this school division, and there's usually a pretty collaborative, easy adjustments made to, to, you know, reasonable request to make those changes. So, yes, Ms. Jessie, you are absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've talked enough on that. Do we, who supports Mr. Wilk's recommendation to, Mr. Wilk?
Sorry, just because it was set on the record. I just, one of my colleagues said that it was a new position for me to take to put money back into the classroom. I think that was unfortunate. When previous board members did not support the additional COLA, I did. When previous board members did not support unfreezing the steps, I did. Since 2015, when I ran, when I was actually campaigning on getting rid of current positions in central office, I have consistently tried to make sure we did not expand central office to that level. So, I just want the record to stand that this is not inconsistent with my voting pattern on this type of stuff.
Okay. Any, all those in favor of supporting Mr. Wilk's removal of this position from the budget? So, you want this removed. Raise your hand. I have one, two, three. Did I count that correct? Did everyone verify that, so I don't get accused of making a mistake? There were three votes. Ralston's up, Wilk's up, and Wall. So, that motion--
Thank you, Diane.
Moving on, we'll go next to Ms. Jessie.
This, I have a--
If you don't have anything, you don't have to, you know, you can pat.
I do. In item, the item on Title IX funding, the $866,000, I think it's listed as item 60 in the budget page, summary page. I received an answer to the question today, and the question was not the question that I asked. It seems that I was asking about Title IX, but when I look at the breakdown, it's for equity. So, Title IX, in my mind, is the difference between female and gender equity. That's the way I understand it. When I look at what you've done, 40, you've got $600,000 for 12 high schools, 7,500 for 16 middle. Where is the money for Title IX? And if this is a one-time item, and it seems to relate to the pandemic, because if the, the high schools were not able to get their boosters, why would we not put this one-time funding in the new money that's coming in from the federal government or from state? I'm wondering why we have to have it in our budget. And your equity formula, I see the equity formula that you have here, which is 236,500. But where is the, how does that relate to Title IX?
Okay. So, Deputy Superintendent Iman, I, I believe the most responsible person on that was Ms. Goss and Mr. Bassett, but--
That, that is correct, Dr. Waltz. Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Dr. Waltz, you are correct. I'm sure Ms. Goss can provide some detail. But, Mrs. Jessie, Title IX, remember, is in addition to the things I believe you were referring to, can involve the facilities and things that need to be done at schools regarding a number of things, from uniforms to facilities and other things to bring equity for male and female activities. But, Mrs. Goss, I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Mr. Iman, Mrs. Jessie, the formula that's laid out before you in the answer on the board questions, I believe it's board question number five, that does support Title IX, as Mr. Iman was alluding to, because those funds would be utilized by schools. When those types of budgetary expenses come up, then they could utilize that funding to make sure that we do have equitable resources between male and female sports, which it could include some of those, those expenditures that Mr. Iman was referring to relative to, to facilities or, or uniforms. And it also goes to, you'll see up further in that answer was about the officiating, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bassett to talk a little bit more about this-- bit more about this Title IX funding and ability to ensure that we have equity across schools for both girls' and boys' athletics.
Sorry, I want to just interrupt you a little bit more. So, there's a Title I and Title IX committee of some sort. So, is this based on that committee? And the question is, again, since this is a one-time funding, and it seems like much of it related to the pandemic, because they could not have games, why do we have it in our budget, and why can't we transfer this amount of money to the 93 million we're going to get from the federal government? It's a one-time expenditure, and it seems that it would fit in that. Could you just address that? I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's just that when it came out, it was just, I had so many different answers on it, and I still do not see a delineation where there's funding for girls versus the uniforms for boys or something of that nature. It's just very unclear. So, thank you. I'm sorry.
So, before Mr. Basset responds, let me just say that this is to begin a funding stream to address this year after year. So, we actually need considerably more dollars than this, but we need to get an item in the budget where this can be funded every year and hopefully expanded upon. And with that, Mr. Basset?
Thank you, Dr. Walts, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to address this issue. Ms. Jesse, to be, cut to the chase here, the issue is that our high schools and middle school athletic programs and student activities programs do not receive any funding from the school division beyond what is necessary to staff those programs. So, the reason I think it's important to state that is that that means that as a principal, and I know you sat in that chair, so you can have an appreciation for how this works, the principal has to fund the operation of all of those athletic and student activity programs out of their instructional budgets. So, the fixed cost of things like officiating being covered by this request will enable a principal who's identified a deficiency in their school's athletic or student activity program, the flexibility to use funds to address those issues and not have to worry about some of the known fixed costs that they have every single year related to things like officiating. So, if we can take that burden off the schools, knowing that it's paid, that's paid for, they can address areas with the superintendent's audit process that we've put in place this year for Title IX at every one of our middle and high schools, where they identify the need for, let's say there's been uniforms that have been replaced at a greater frequency for boys' sports than female sports at a particular school. This will enable the principal to be in a much better position to address those needs, not having to go into their site-based funds to pay for basic operational costs that we know they will incur every year. The equity part of the formula is designed to drive some of the resolution to the issues that actually, I believe it was you, Ms. Jesse, that had raised previously about the unevenness of experiences that students have with their athletic or activities programs at their schools as a result of fundraising capabilities at some schools as compared to others. And I'm happy to go into more detail, but that's essentially the gist of that. I see, Mr. Iman.
Mrs. Jesse, I think to add to what Dr. Walts also said is that we do need a funding stream that would be year after year. This was intended just to be a start, and as Mr. Basset said, it's really important for us to find a way to help schools address any issues that they may identify, that the division may identify through the Title IX audit process that we put in to place this school year.
And to confirm what Mrs. Goss said, you recall that the board included in Dr. Walts' goals for this year to do exactly this, to assess these Title IX needs division-wide. An informational memo was provided to the board earlier this year stating what that process would be, because there was a timeline in his goals to submit that to the board, and it was met. There's a follow-up timeline, which will also be met, to provide the board with the results of those. And this is the funding that's needed to support the board's direction.
The board, okay, I'm going to try this again, because I think I'm confusing people. $600,000, because we did not have the games and collected those funds. A one-time, you said, a one-time funding. My question, I guess I would ask Mr. Wallenford, why would we put the $600,000 in our budget when we could possibly put it in the one-time pandemic additional monies that we're getting? I'm not questioning, I do question whether it's delineated, girl versus boy or that type of thing, gender, because it was very vague the last time, and it's a little bit vague now, but I'm going to let that go. I'm just, the question is, it's a one-time funding, but then Dr. Walts said it's a plan for a future funding, but right now it's listed as one-time funding, item 60. Can we, I'm asking you, and maybe we can deal with this a little bit later, because I don't want to dominate this, has any thought been given to the $600,000, instead of coming out of our budget, and if it's one time because of the pandemic, why can't it go into some of the other additional funding that we're going to receive for one-time expenses related to a pandemic? Can that happen?
Thank you for the question, Mrs. Jesse. Here's what I'd say. There are a variety of things. If you go through this budget, you'll find many, many things that, in fact, we could probably use federal funding to support. And I'll just give you one example that, right off the top of my head, school buses. We've built school buses into this budget, but we certainly could use the new funding and the remainder of the current tranche of $39.1 million. This budget is built, understanding that we're going to fund our operations. That item is currently listed, you're absolutely correct, is currently listed as one-time funding. But there is the understanding that those expenditures will need to continue on. Recurring funding is something, and we talked a bit about this at the last work session, recurring funding is something that I would caution us against using these federal revenues to support. I hope that helps answer your question.
It doesn't, but the question is, can you relook at this $600,000 as we receive additional revenue, to see if we can use the monies that we're receiving for one-time items related to pandemic funding, and see if we can, instead of spending our money that we spend the federal funds that we're receiving? Does that make sense?
So, Ms. Jesse, can I just weigh in here? Because I had a similar question as you did, and I had asked...
Thank you, but I'm beginning to get a headache.
No, no. So, I think, so I think one thing is, they couldn't spend the 90 million, because we didn't get it yet, right? So, that's number one. Number two, I think, and I think the board has encouraged Dr. Walts and the staff, that if there are one-time things we could spend the money on, we should use the one-time CARES monies to do that, to offset, in all legal ways, what we're allowed to do. There is also the concern, my understanding, the VDOE may put restrictions on the 93 million and ask us to apply for the tranches as we need them based on possible needs. So, I think, I suspect if there are things in the budget, Dr. Walts, you can correct me, if there are things in the budget that we could say, you know, this is a pandemic-related new cost that we were planning on using, you know, operational monies on, but now we're getting this new money, we could do some cost shifting and moving things around. Is that correct, Dr. Walts?
That is correct.
Right. So, I think that will solve your question on any number of issues that could be.
Thank you. And finally, at Mrs. Williams' request, we both want to reaffirm that non-traditional school will receive the fixed allocation, right? Did I say it correctly, Ms. Williams? Fixed, yes. And that's, can we just say yes to that?
So, I don't know. It's, we're just looking for a clarification on the difference between fixed, like requesting, asking a fixed budget versus what we heard tonight, which is a restored budget. And if we could speak to that, because, you know, we're just generally concerned moving forward in time, that the way the budget is allocated, that if they, there's a loss in students, particularly with independence enrollment, part of it being dependent upon referrals, that as time goes on, their budget remains the same. And we appreciate the restorative part, but that's really generally where the question was headed. Thank you, Ms. Jesse.
So, a mechanical question. We allocate a specific number of students. The dollars can flex year to year, simply because, forget the pandemic for a second, because salaries increase. This year, we're looking at a 5% increase, so their budget would go up because of that. There are other factors like inflation, COLAs that apply to the budget, so the dollar numbers may change. The number of students, however, do not. Their per pupil allocation stays the same. I hope that clarifies a bit. And one last thing I'd say, and that is, the number of students that you would see in Mr. Icorn's allocation is the same number that you would have seen in the fiscal '21. But again, we have a 5% raise, so the numbers are going to be a little bit larger.
So, just for understanding, like, because I'm not good at math, it takes me a little bit longer. Let's say if their enrollment is 100. We allocate funds based on 100 students, regardless of whether he gets 100 students, or we anticipate 100 students, or 200 students, his budget is still based upon the maximum amount of students that, or in this case, it would be 100, 100 students. And then, if his enrollment drops, he still gets budgeted for 100 students, because some, that's where the concern really is, because independence has, maybe like, the difference being, a traditional high school would have five English teachers and 100 English students, and with Mr. Icorn's school, with Independence, you know, maybe they have one student in an English class this year. Last year, they had seven, but irregardless of the number of students, they still have to have the same staffing ratio to provide the services for the students that are there, as opposed to a more traditional program. That's the heart of the question.
So, simply stated, if Mr. Icorn has 100 students in the fiscal '21 allocation, Mr. Icorn will have 100 students in the fiscal '22 allocation, and if he actually has 90 students show up, he'll be funded for 100 students. If 110 students show up, he'll be funded for 100 students.
Thank you. I think that's important for a couple of reasons. One, because this program does fluctuate. Two, the public, I don't think always has a good understanding of the programs at Independence. And three, we have a lot of new board members, so I just want to make sure that, as a board, we understand how budgets and enrollments can affect the program over there, and why that's important. So, I really appreciate that.
I hate to beat a dead horse today. When you said, if he has 100 students, if he has 90 students, he's funded for 100. If he has 110, he's funded for 100. So, he will not receive the additional allocation, the September 30 deadline, you know, for school budgets. So, if I get more students, which means I may have to hire an additional teacher, will he not receive that funding for that additional staffing? Because you know how those numbers work as a principal, it can jump over, and all of a sudden, in order for teacher-pupil ratio, you have to hire another teacher. Will he be fixed at that level and cannot go up? We just want to make sure he doesn't go down.
So, to reassure you, he will not go down. When that budget was developed several years ago, it was developed with capacity in mind, okay? In other words, to the question, and your question about the word theoretical, when that budget was built, it was built at 100%. Theoretically, he won't go over that number, but with certainty, his allocation won't be reduced, his dollars won't be reduced because of fewer students. One last thing I'd say...
An additional 15 or 20 students means that he has to hire an additional teacher? Is that already built in? That's my question.
That's already built in, Mrs. Jesse.
Thank you.
One last thing I'd say really quickly. Mr. Icorn and Dr. Walts said this, this is a unique year. Dr. Icorn was very gracious and helped out the school division substantially in early October to early November, when we were going through the September 30 reconciliations.
Any further, Ms. Jesse?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
I have nothing budgetary-wise, just an ask that when we, next week, when we meet, if we could reiterate the difference between CARES funding and our operational budget, so for the public's understanding and the board, so that there's no confusion on what it is we're voting on, and how the funds are two separate streams. Otherwise, I am very grateful for the budget. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. I'm still processing this slide, so I have a clarifying question for slide number six, as it pertains to class size in secondary schools. And it kind of piggybacks to what Ms. Williams and Ms. Jesse were talking about in enrollment. And my concerns regarding secondary schools and enrollment and the impact of maybe overstaffing and the success of programs specifically in high school. If this class size decrease in a student-to-teacher ratio, would that help with that enrollment? Would that mean that the classes sizes could be smaller and you'd get more money, and then maybe, could you explain the impact of that, please?
Sure. The impact of reducing that student-teacher ratio from 21 point, I think it was 21.3, to 20.3, is that it increases the funding for the same number of students. So, to use Mrs. Jesse's example, if we have 100 students, and you have a ratio that could get you a million dollars, if that student-teacher ratio is decreased, you're going to get a million, $100,000. That provides more money to the school, and they can do a variety of things with it, including reducing class size.
Hey, that's helpful. And then, the second part of that question has to do with the economic funding for disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged funding, and we're increasing, so if we increase funding across all grade levels, that way, the principal has the autonomy to use money perhaps towards a TA in a kindergarten class.
Again, like my prior answer, there are a variety of things that they could use that money for. That's correct.
And then, my question pertaining to the budget is, there are three pandemic coordinators, and thank you again for answering these questions, because I know ahead of time that we've hired two of them, and that when their position is done, like, finished with the pandemic, then they, could you clarify what happens with the position afterwards, and then clarify what this last position's for?
So, what I would say is, I'll provide a little information, and maybe Mrs. Heebner may want to chime in on this after I'm done. We've currently hired two, and I may get this wrong, and so, Mrs. Heebner can fix my mistake, but we have one who is a nurse, who could potentially go back to nursing, or be absorbed into the organization in other capacities. And I forget what the, the second one also has skills, and I honestly, I can't remember what that is, and maybe Mrs. Heebner can jump in, but that second coordinator as well can land in other places in the organization after that two, we're expecting a two-year period right now. We'll see how that works out, of course. And the third one, the third one has not been hired at this point.
Is it possible to get clarification with the third position entails?
The third position is...
Mrs. Heebner, please.
Thank you. So, yeah, as Mr. Wallenford talked to, our pandemic coordinators each have a unique function. We're very pleased to have Priya Sharma, who joined us, who was formerly a school nurse and is now really handling the, a lot of the nursing aspect of the pandemic, supporting our school nurses, a lot of the medical procedures. Heather Wines was our first pandemic coordinator, so for a while, she was doing it all on her own. She comes to us as a director of school counseling from the middle school, and she brings that lens of the school function and working. She has mainly been supporting schools and administrators in identifying close contacts, working through the process once someone is COVID positive, working and communicating. working through the process once someone is COVID positive, working and communicating with schools and the, and the office communications, organizing our data and supporting Mrs. Slater, who is really our, you know, queen of the pandemic alongside me, who really helps us with everything. Throughout this, we've recognized the need to provide additional support, mental health support to our schools for, you know, the trauma that kids are feeling, and even at this point in time, our staff members in working through the pandemic and working with kids who are just experiencing a lot of different concerns, mental health concerns. So our third pandemic coordinator, and I, I hate to say it, there's enough work for three people when it comes to the amount of work that goes in working through these situations that occur in schools. So our third person, we're hoping, would bring that expertise and help us really provide some focused mental health support to our schools in addition to supporting just our everyday case investigation, data management, and, and the function of pandemic. It's a lot for our team. I hope that helps.
It did. Thank you. I'm done, Dr. Latif.
Ms. Walt?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. My question, my first question, I guess, I suppose, is, do we have an idea yet of any of the parameters for the spending that will come through the federal government? I, I know, I'm sure there will be strings attached, or there will be, you know, financial parameters. Is it, is it assumed that it will be similar to the CARES language that came, you know, that had to be used to support, like, I know there's something about 20% needs to be used for like student learning loss, but if you could speak to that a little bit, because I know there are some things in the budget, and we've talked about this already, so I don't want to cover the same ground. But you know, things that we might be able to move around, depending on what those parameters are. Could you speak to what we know about those parameters at this time?
Mr. Wallingford?
Sure, just a couple of thoughts. You're correct, that 20% number, for us, that's in the range of 17 to 18 million dollars. That has to be used for learning loss. The rest can be used in a very similar fashion. In fact, if you read the legislation that was, was reconciled in the House today, if you read that legislation, what you would see is that it actually refers directly to the old, the older legislation, the CARES Act. So very similar constraints from the federal government. The one thing, however, and, and Dr. Latif mentioned this, is that this money is coming directly, not directly to us, it's coming through VDOE, and VDOE is layering some additional requirements on us that are not part of the legislation. This is a conversation we've been having internally for the past week or so. And what that does is it actually makes it a little bit more challenging logistically to get at the money, because we actually have to determine what we're going to do, go apply for it, wait for a response to, to the application, and then we can go ahead. And so it's, it's a little inconvenient, but it's, I guess it's difficult to complain if we're going to get that substantial kind of money, right?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, obviously, you know, from a taxpayer standpoint, they want to know that we're using, you know, those, that money to, you know, alleviate the effects of the pandemic on our, our students. So that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. My other question is kind of related, but it has to do with, I know we, I think we talked about this last time, but I'm curious about what the state has for virtual options for elementary school, if there's anything for middle school. I know we have Virtual Virginia. I know we have Virtual Prince William, but is there any sense of, or is there, are there resources in the virtual world that we could become a part of or that we can tap into if we were to explore the option of, you know, I, I think the General Assembly had some language in there that we might be needing to provide a virtual option for all students. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, I mentioned kind of a 30,000-foot view of that with the Virtual Virginia, but I will refer to Mr. Guilfoyle, please.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Waltz. I've actually asked Director A.J. Phillips from our IT staff. She has our resident expert on all things Virtual Virginia, so I'm going to ask her to kind of give you some of those details.
Thank you, Mr. Guilfoyle. Good evening, everyone. So Virtual Virginia is always had in the past few years, a secondary program, six through 12, right? For the first time ever, next year, they're going to offer a K through 5 elementary program. And so after speaking with them today, they, at this point, they do not have a cap on that. That any school district can pay for their students to go there. We get a discount, so to speak. And then along with that, they will, they're doing K through 5. That's full-time only. Any student in K through 5 who does that program will be full-time only. They do currently have a 3 through 5 asynchronous pilot that they're doing. They're not sure they will continue that next year. They have the 6 through 12, which is, can be full-time, or you can take one or two supplemental classes, kind of like what we do for Virtual Prince William. And then there's a Virginia outreach program through Virtual Virginia, which is basically for teachers that they can log in and get some of the free modules and stuff through campus, because we both have the same learning management system. So that's kind of the Virtual Virginia in, in totality. They're planning on K through 5 classes to be 24 students per class.
And you said there is not currently a cap on that?
There is, they currently do not have an enrollment, they do not have an enrollment cap on the K through 5 program at this time.
So any elementary student potentially throughout the Commonwealth, if parents should desire, could enroll in?
So in order, in, in order to get into the program, if you are a public school student, you must go to your counselor, and your counselor must then get you into the program. And that's K through 5 and 6 through 12 as well. So if you're private school, private school or homeschool, then it's up to the private school to do it or the homeschool parent to then pay that fee and enroll them in the program. Prince William County, though, would still, if we were to, you know, we, we currently have kids 6 through 12 and throughout the division that take Virtual Virginia classes. We don't have anybody full-time, but we have them taking some of the courses. Prince William County would still be responsible for a part of the fee. We would be responsible for the counselors. We would be responsible for student services. We would be responsible for a computer, making sure they have internet, a scanner, headphones, microphones, any software, any textbooks they may need. If there's a SOL associated with it, they would do that here. So, and then basically what happens is they're giving a numeric grade, and then if we need to change it to a letter grade, we would do that here in Prince William. That's getting a little nitty gritty, but all their courses, 6 through 12, except for four or five of them, are NCAA approved, so that means students could then take sports locally if we chose to let them do that. And they're still tied and associated to our, our funding. So, and also, but that means those scores also come back to us too for accreditation, good, bad, and ugly. You're welcome.
Anything further, Ms. Walt? Okay. Ms. Ralston?
Hi, Pass.
Okay, Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm going to read something directly out of the answers from the school board members. It's on page 10. It says, "The overall proposed budget focuses on areas that the superintendent and school board have established as priorities. Additional social workers, psychologists, mental health, guidance counselors, nurses, expanding preschool programs, information technology, pandemic response, and the largest budget item, a 5% employee pay raise, woo-hoo, all reflect competing budget priorities." And the next bullet down says, "There are a number of positions added in this budget to support the infrastructure and operation of the school division. While some of these may be perceived as KLC positions, however, a number also serve directly in schools. At the same time, the pandemic has imposed substantial new and changing requirements upon functions such as information technology, finance, human resources, student services, et cetera. Each one of these positions must be viewed in the context of the budget requests and the potential impact of funding or not funding the positions." So the reason I read that was because when my little budget group and Mr. Wilk's budget group got together, there were a number of questions that came up. And when we got answers to our questions today, we noticed that in the proposed budget, most of these positions have already been filled. There's only one that hasn't, which is a information technology network engineer. Two have been filled. One is a vacancy. And I think you also said there's one pandemic, was it supervisor? Yes, when, when Ms. Jackson asked her question. So I guess my concern is this is put in our budget going forward, but we've already hired these positions and these people are doing the work. So could someone maybe talk a little bit about how that's working right now? And then if they are supporting pandemic, I know you talked about it in terms of the pandemic team, but you've also said that there were positions added to HR because of the pandemic. What was it, HR and, what did I say? There were information technology, that one to me is obvious, finance, human resources, those, those kinds of positions. Can, can someone explain, one, I know we needed more, but moving forward, are we going to continue to need those positions in that capacity? Or what, what's the vision here as it pertains to what we have now, which is already filled and moving forward? If that makes sense?
Yes. So every year, we have certain positions that are created to respond to the ongoing needs of the school division. So I'm going to give an example at a school. So a school, each school gets a budget. And let's say that they determine, as I used as an example before, that they can reallocate the funding in, in various parts of their budget to put together a STEAM lab with a full-time teacher. We've had several schools that have done that. So they have the ability, the authority to do that. In the same way, the division central office can make changes to respond to whatever the needs of the school division are. So first and foremost, to start off, we're way behind the eight ball in the staffing of the central office positions and the need for them compared to other school divisions on a per pupil basis. So we had an extensive study just a few years ago. Several of the board members who are on the board now were on when that occurred. The thinking was perhaps that we were overstaffed when the results were the opposite, that, that we were very understaffed in almost every part of the school division. So for example, when you started having to, do all kinds of calculations in, in payroll when we were doing the, the hazard pay in the summer and all of these different implications on payroll, we were already understaffed in payroll. So I approved a position for payroll. So that's just like one example. But what happens, Ms. Zargarpur, is when these positions are, are created, if they're going to be ongoing, and in, in most cases, they will be. Now again, the pandemic coordinators are one example of, you know, as Mr. Wallingford said, you know, you guys may be wrestling with this for another full year. So the person who was a nurse may need, those needs may continue for another year. If not, that person would have the option to go back to nursing, to be a school nurse. But whenever that's done, if it's an ongoing position, it then needs to be rolled into the budget. So you have some of that happening every year. It's just because of the emergency of the pandemic, we needed several additional positions across various parts of the school division. So we needed more help and benefits because the unbelievable amount of consultations, of tier one mitigation, we were already stressed and, and understaffed in HR. So to put that position in benefits, you know, quite frankly, there's, for, for the majority of these positions, they're going to be needed going forward. So that gives you a couple of examples. I would also want to add one other thing that I think might address both the comments you, comments and questions you made now and then earlier in the board meeting that I think is important. So I know you were one of the individuals that wanted to have more T specs, and, and you join a rising chorus of people across the school division. And John, you step right in there and correct me if I'm wrong on anything, but those are central office positions, when in effect, they're funded centrally, but the employees are distributed across the school division. And we have many groups of employees who it looks like they're housed in the central office when in fact, they work their full-time job out in a school. And that's just another example of a large group of those that make it look like, wow, we're putting all kinds of additional money in the central office, when in fact, they're working full-time in schools.
If I could, Dr. Waltz, another good example of what you just mentioned is Michelle Roper's team in special education. Several of those folks work out in the schools a majority of the time. They don't sit in their cubes upstairs on the second floor, so that's a, a really good example. One other thing I'd add, Mrs. Zargarpur, when you refer to that table, those positions are filled, but if you take a look at the, at the long sheet as we refer to it, what you'll see is there are several, several other positions. So your impression that all of the positions that are added in the budget have already been filled is not quite correct. There are other positions. The question asked, what are the questions that have been interviewed, offered, or filled? It didn't ask, what are all of the positions that you have in the budget? Okay, that's actually one of the things that we chased through today and yesterday, trying to make sure we were correct on that.
So are all three student services pandemic coordinator positions, are all three of those filled? Are you still hiring for one of those?
Two of those are currently filled.
Two are filled. Okay.
That's correct.
And, and, and let me be clear, I, I do, many of the ones that were listed in the questions came off of this long sheet. I wasn't asking about the whole long sheet. I was just noticing that several of the ones that in our committees people had asked us about happened to be the ones that were on here, so that's where that came from.
Just trying to provide clarity.
I was trying to also. All right. No, I appreciate the explanation because I do think it's important to understand that there, there is a lot of work that is done in the field, so to speak. And, and those things are obviously very important. And with this increase in technology use that we've got, we've got to also protect, I suspect those network engineers are making sure that we don't get broken into and stuff sold on the dark net and all that good stuff. So I know they're important. Sometimes I just think we need to be very clear about what these positions are and, and their purpose and how important they are as well. So, thank you.
So I'll, I'll just add a couple of comments. Dr. Waltz, I, again, I think I'm glad you referred to the staffing study, and I think it was important, and you said this, and I, I want to reiterate this, that even after the pandemic's over, there's enough work for these people that we could find because the staffing study has shown we're, we're way behind where we, we ought to be when compared with our other districts our size. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, it is.
And, and you continue, you know, and I, and I think it's important for the public to know that, you know, we've managed this pandemic with that smaller level of staffing compared to other school divisions, and in many ways, done more than other school divisions have done. Is that accurate?
I completely concur with that assessment.
I, I think it's important because, you know, we, we talk a lot about the great pandemic effort Mrs. Heebner's done, but I think sometimes we might forget the great pandemic effort our IT people have done. And with the T staff folks that you've added, I think that's incredible. But with our IT folks, you know, I, I, every day I wake up seeing other school divisions having problems with their IT for that day. Now, we've had our share of issues. Some of them are not ours. They're, they're maybe service-related, like from Verizon or something like that. But I think we've done a remarkable job with the level of staffing we have at IT for the incredible effort we've had to make this year with virtual schooling. Is that correct?
You are absolutely correct, Dr. Latif.
Okay. So, so I, and I, and I bring this up because I continue to support, as I have each year, the thoughtful, methodical increases that this school division has done from their department recommendations on the way, all the way up to Dr. Waltz's office on their needs for staffing, and, and the continued- needs for staffing, and the continued commitment that the school division has done as far as keeping as much money in classrooms. And I think that's important to note, and I think it's important for all of us to recognize and again, celebrate, even if we have some minor disagreements here on this budget amongst each other, but I think this is, it's really important. Is that accurate, Dr. Waltz, how I think about that?
Yes, and I appreciate that. And I would, I would just like to add one other thing because I know several board members, including yourself, are very interested in this instructional program. When you think of how the, with only very few additions in our entire instructional department, how they stood up the content on Canvas, working with our teachers across the school division, and supported the ELs, that was a massive undertaking with very small additions to staffing.
Thank you very much. So I think if there's any other folks who have a recommendation for anything else they want off the budget, I think this would be your time. Mr. Wilk?
One at a time or just all?
Look, I think you are the only one that I see who has a number of them. Let's take all of yours and take care of them right now.
Okay, thank you. I've long said, and I voted, I wanted this voted out last year, that we should be actually phasing out textbooks, in my opinion, adding another 279,000 additional funds, speaking of things in the classroom, are the books that sit all around that do never get, that never get utilized because we're buying entire periods and sections, all these class textbooks. I would much rather use something like that, to hire five counselors and put them in our most economically disadvantaged high schools, as opposed to continue to just put more money into textbooks at the school level. So my motion is to remove the 279,793 dollars, line item five, under new resources, from the budget.
Dr. Waltz, can you just clarify, that's not just for new textbooks. My understanding is that's on either replacing current ones, or there's a, it's not a pure sort of textbook thing. Well, is, am I wrong in that?
You are correct. And there's also virtual textbooks. In many classrooms, we do short sets. But one thing that I would really want to make is this point, especially at the elementary level, and Mrs. Jesse would in particular understand this, I think Ms. Zargarpur would as well, is we have many expendable books. In other words, you, a student is given a book for one year, in which case they're writing in that book. And so those have to be replaced. I want to remind the school board that we have a new English language arts adoption, and we have kids, whether it's virtual or in-person, who still require textbooks. Also in that funding, say, for example, you have an AP Lit class. There are many teachers who buy short sets of pieces of literature, pre-K to 12, that that money is used for. And finally, I would like to throw it to Mr. Wallingford to talk about how the textbook fund comes from the state and how the matching money works. Mr. Wallingford, please.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Briefly, we get a revenue stream from the state of Virginia that we're supposed to use on textbooks. One of the things, and like Dr. Waltz suggested and Dr. Latif questioned, there are things other than hardback textbooks. You know, I think of my old English book or a math book, but the revenue stream that we get from the state, we have to check that every year and make sure that we are using the revenue that they share for, with us for textbooks and making the match happen. And part of the reason you see that number is because we needed to raise, raise that expenditure to match what the state is providing to us.
Okay. I think, Ms. Jesse, and then we'll go ahead and vote.
I understand his concern. You know, I've seen textbooks sit around, and I, when the language arts committee presented, I think I asked several questions about leveled textbooks at the elementary level, digital kinds of considerations, and was pleased with that. I do think it's something that we, that Mr. Wilk said, we really do need to monitor because I think there are books that are in classrooms. But I do think that looking at what happened with the last presentation, I was very pleased with the variety, and you cannot engage in continuous learning with one textbook. I am more concerned about, which is not my turn really, but I'm more concerned about reading in the content, content areas and reading specialists at the middle and high school level, where you have children reading at the fifth grade level and need that support. So that these textbooks should be leveled so that when you're teaching a content area, that the readability is adjusted based on the reading level of the student. So that's just a discussion I think that we really need to have because, you know, my daughter does a lot of tutoring, and she ends up with these kids who are in ninth grade, reading on a fifth grade level, and the material has to be adjusted. But I think we're doing a better job of that, but I do think it's a discussion that we need to have. And I do understand your concern, Mr. Wilk. Although I won't be voting with you, but I still, I understand your concern.
Anyone else? Ms. Zargarpur.
I do wonder if it would be possible at some point to survey teachers and ask them what they find most useful for their classrooms in terms of, I mean, the leveled reading material in the content area sounds really important. I would be interested in knowing what they view as the things that they feel work with their students, since they, they're the ones doing all this work. And I'm sure, that's a conversation for later, but just something to keep in mind that maybe we can include people in that level too.
Ms. Wall?
I was wondering, I mean, I remember that we purchased, I think it was Lexia, or some, there was some kind of program that we purchased that was helping our English language learners. It was adaptive reading technology that assists a learner, adapts to their reading level. Is that also included in this? Is that the kind of thing we're talking about here in this textbook funding? Because I think programs like that are really useful and very advantageous to our efforts to, you know, help kids become much more proficient as readers. Is that, is that the kind of thing that we're talking about here too?
Short answer to your question, Mrs. Wall, is no, that would be included in new software. And when you look at the chart of accounts, that would be software, not textbooks.
Okay. All in favor of Mr. Wilk's recommendation to remove the monies used to buy textbooks? Please raise your hand if you'd like to remove that from the budget. Raise it up high so we know. So when the picture's in the paper, they'll get it right. Hand is right. We have one vote for Mr. Wilk.
The paper's not here. They only cover scary stories.
Right. Okay. So next, Mr. Wilk.
I, again, my opinion, clearly, feel like this is like, whatever, anyways. I would like to remove line item 35, another additional internal auditor for 173,307 dollars. That would be my motion.
So I, so let me, let me speak to that because the auditor works for the school board and the audit committee. So I can, I'll answer that because I'm not sure I'll get a whole lot of support from anywhere else on this. But it has come to our attention over the course of being on audit committee for three years, there, there is a necessity to ensure fidelity to the public on our spending and compliance with laws and spending laws. So the audit office ensures our fidelity, it ensures our compliance, it ensures many things. We look at PTO budgets, we look at budgets for the schools, and it's quite a bit of work. And we haven't been able to do some of the things large organizations with 1.4, 1.5 billion-dollar budgets can do to ensure that level of fidelity. We have done a fantastic job, and we have a great finance department who takes great pride in the work they do, and we've been recognized for that. And that, Dr. Waltz, is certainly something that over the course of 16 years, the division has won many awards for our financial services and the work we do. But adding another auditor, I feel and believe is very important because I think it adds, it also adds, as you look at the entire enterprise, we call it enterprise risk management, or ERM, so allows someone to come in here and say, hey, look, here's where we are at risk. So we could have future problems in this area. And so it's someone who helps target, or she is, you know, someone who can help us target areas where we have some weaknesses in the financial structure and other, you know, organizational structures. So, and that's why I've requested the, and the audit committee did vote that through, and I think we did, the audit committee voted to recommend that to the entire board.
That's what I was told.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Waltz. I can't remember, Mary, did we vote on that in the full board meeting to recommend the audits recommendation? I can't remember if we-
I don't believe so. I think just the committee voted.
Okay. Just the committee. So just so you know, the committee voted on moving that through. Ms. Wall, if you have anything to add?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I also support the idea of an internal auditor for a couple of reasons, the reasons that Dr. Latif mentioned. But also, if you think about what an auditor does, they provide a really crucial service because they can look, they can look at things holistically, and they can also dive in and look at programs and operations, such as how we do things, like processes of how we do things. And they can find inefficiencies and make recommendations. And so, for instance, you know, if we wanted, the auditor goes and looks at all of the individual schools and how they're spending their money, the resources, sorry, and how, you know, there are checks and balances of how all that happens. That's really important. But they also, he was also able to take a look at all of the CARES money that we received, a huge amount of money, $55 million, and in a, you know, pretty quick manner and very efficiently identify, you know, where did we spend that money, and how, you know, how was that allocated? And that kind of lens is really important as we move forward. We're a big school division, and we have, you know, so many schools and so many budgets. And I think our auditor is entirely overworked, and he does an amazing job. For instance, he looked at all of our PTOs and all of our boosters for every school, and made a gigantic chart that was so incredibly detailed. It's such good information. We can make a lot of decisions based on that information. I think, you know, we, one auditor for a division this size and a budget this size is actually really small. That's a really, I think, I think that this is actually something that would just make us more efficient, you know, good government, like use our resources wisely. I think it really helps us do that. So I actually think this is an important, I'm on the budget, I mean, I'm on the audit committee, so obviously I'm in support of this. But those are some of the reasons why we suggested, or we recommended that this be added to the budget.
Okay. If anyone else has any say, let's take the vote. All in favor of Mr. Wilk's recommendation to remove the audit position from this year's budget, please raise your hand. One. Okay. Next, Mr. Wilk.
I'm not going to prolong this.
Outstanding. Any other board members have any other issues that they'd like to bring up? And we still have one week, and at this point, typically what we do is, you know, the ground rules suggest we do a straw poll at the beginning of the meeting to sort of say we support the budget. At this point, I'll assume, if there's no opposition, that everyone's going to come to the board meeting next week and support the budget, as is, outside of any sort of last-minute changes I would ask you to do before we get to the board meeting, so there's no surprises for either the public or the staff. If there's anything you might have missed or didn't have a chance to say tonight that you can work out with Dr. Waltz and the finance staff, I think I would recommend that. But at this point, the spirit of this, I'd like to leave this room saying that the spirit of the board supports the budget currently as is. Is any opposition to that statement? Can you turn the microphone on, Ms. Jesse? Ms. Jesse?
I think this is the shortest one I've attended.
Well, besides the one that you said, "I'm out of here, all good."
No, actually, Dr. Latif, that was the night my sister had passed away. I had to leave.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, I know. But you, but you got everything you wanted that night.
The budget made a difference.
Right, right.
Because I was going to stay.
Well, in the work we did beforehand in that, that meeting as well, was what resulted in a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz, and thank you, everyone.
Well, Dr. Waltz, I mean, for the, is this the 16th or 17th budget you're recommending?
This would be number 15 because the year, well, no, 16. The year that I came in is Dr. Kelly's budget, but the new superintendent in the first year will inherit mine. And interestingly enough, I inherited a good budget for the first year. Money was good for the second year, and it was downhill until now. So interestingly enough, I'll be leaving the superintendent, the new superintendent, I believe, in a very good place.
Well, Dr. Waltz, I think a couple of points that you brought up early in the meeting where you said that you have always left this school division with the flexibility to handle an emergency if one so produced itself, the recession being the first massive one that was a years-long process to work through and save for and deal with and not furlough anyone. And then the pandemic, as we pointed out last year, you know, I felt very comfortable having you, you know, in charge of that budget because of the expertise you had with, you know, sort of the 9/11 post-budgeting in New York, and then the post-budgeting with the recession here. Again, I congratulate you. This board congratulates you. We thank you, and I think this community is well-served by the thoughtful, methodical budgeting you have done over these last 16 seasons.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.